Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Denfeld. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 20, 2021 meeting, the virtual meeting of the Edina City Council. The meeting is being held electronically to comply with the Governor's Stay Safe Minnesota Order and to ensure the safety of all residents and staff. All members of the city council, staff and presenters are participating from their homes or offices. And before we begin, there's a few things we'd like to cover for those listening in and hoping to participate in portions of the meeting. As we've mentioned throughout the time we've been meeting virtually, the city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting public input through our council correspondence, web form, voicemail, and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It is important for all of you to know that are listening in that our comments, the comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. You do not need to submit further communications in another way. All of these communications with the council are being considered equally regardless of the way in which they were submitted to us. Tonight, there are going to be two times that you can call in for comment via phone. The first is during community comment, and that portion of the agenda, you're allowed to speak about anything that's not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. The second opportunity is to call in to comment during the singular public hearing that we have this evening. So if you want to call in for community comment or to provide testimony for the public hearing, that matter involves the potential approval of a right-of-way easement vacation at 5932 Abbott Avenue South. If you want to call in for either matter, the phone number is 800-374-0221. The conference ID is 997-9683, 997-9683. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our city manager is the timer. He'll let you know if you go over the three-minute mark, and then we'll ask you to wrap up your comments, and we will treat everybody fairly from a time standpoint. Remember again, you don't need to call in tonight. If you've already provided feedback, if you have something supplemental you want to call in on, please do so. Do not repeat any information already presented. Call in if you have new comments or information to bring forward, but let's try to avoid any redundancy if we can. To make sure residents have an opportunity to fully participate, we've adopted a practice of, on public hearing matters, of not acting on those public hearing matters the night the information is presented. With respect to the public hearing I mentioned earlier, that will remain open until noon Monday, January 25th. If you want to submit further testimony regarding that proposed matter, you can leave a voicemail with your feedback at 952-826-0377, 952-826-0377, or submit a comment through the form online or at BetterTogetherEdina.org. Thanks in advance for your patience as we work to conduct this meeting online using different kinds of software, as I mentioned, and as I mentioned, everybody working from different places, Homer officers, about 20 people working on this production. So we hope there won't be any glitches, but if there are, we'll certainly try to fix them as quickly as possible. So now I'm going to call the meeting to order, and roll call, please. Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Present. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to remove an item or amend the meeting agenda in some form? Let me know, otherwise they'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as shown.
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves the approval of the meeting agenda as shown. Member Pierce seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to approval of the meeting agenda.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The form of meeting agenda published is approved. Next, we are going to community comment. So now we're going to hear from residents who would like to speak to the council about something not on tonight's agenda and not scheduled for a future public hearing. Participate in community comment, again, call in at 1-800-374-0221. Conference ID, again, 997-9683, 997-9683. An operator will ask for your name and address and put you in the queue to speak, and you'll have three minutes to speak, and Manager Neil will let you know if you run into, into a period of time where you're, you've got to wrap up your remarks. So let's go to Director Bennerott and see if we have anybody that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them.
Good evening, Mayor Hovland and members of the council. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Andy Brown. Operator, will you please unmute Andy's line? And Andy, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
The line is now open. Yes, hello, my name is Andy Brown, 5512 Park Place in Edina. My aunt and uncle, Suzie and Jerry Jursa, are at, on Lexington Street in East Edina, and my mom, Sherry Brown, is on 57th and Zenith in East Edina as well. I'm calling about the fire station for the east northeast part of Edina. Bit concerned, as it's been a year since the city's own staff consultants have come back saying that this should be a top priority and that it needs to be done as quickly as possible, and I think that's been borne out by the fact that we've got substantial development going into the Grandview Old Public Works site and now the Perkins site, and as far as development community being able to continue to move on those locations without any potential fire station going into those lots. I know that we were looking at those potentially. So really concerned as to, you know, where those stand. My family has, you know, relationships with council members here. Ms. Jackson, my mom's around with you at Edinburgh and for a good bunch of time, and Councilmember Pierce, my aunt and uncle are retired from Cargill, so they've worked with you in the past, so I'm hopeful that this remains and continues to be a number one priority and that gets done in the next 12 months and not in five to 10 years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else? Director Bennerott in the queue for community comment?
I do not have anyone else in the queue at this time. I do have at least one other caller listening in though, so as a reminder, if you would like to speak, I need you to press star one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk sign, then the number one. That will put you in the queue to speak. I still don't see anyone in the queue because there is a slight delay in the broadcast. I would recommend we wait a minute or so before moving on, giving people a chance to both call in and then get in the queue. My clock shows it at 7:10, so I'll come back to you either when I have a caller or 7:11, whichever is first.
Thank you, Director Bennerott.
My clock now shows 7:11, and I don't have anyone else in the queue, so I think you can move on with your meeting agenda.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's response to community comments that took place at the prior meeting. Manager Neil, I don't recall there were any, but I might be wrong about that.
There, thank you, Your Honor. There was one, but our custom has been for me to respond to questions. I don't, I have not, and I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to respond to comments. And so there was a comment during our last meeting's community, community comment, and it really wasn't, it's not for me to respond to. So that's where I would like to leave that.
All right, very good. That's a good distinction to keep in mind. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We've got seven items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as shown?
So moved.
Member Anderson moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Member Pierce seconds. The adoption of the consent agenda, any further discussion? Roll call, please. Clerk Allison, with respect to the potential adoption of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The items on the consent agenda are adopted by this single motion. The only thing I wanted to point out, as we usually do, is with regard to the resolution that was part of the consent agenda dealing with accepted donations, some very generous donations as always, but to the police department, the crime fund donated almost $7,000 for K-9 expenses, and then for the fire department, NC Little Hospice donated $1,500 for general use to the fire department, and J. Patrick and Linda Smith, a very generous gift of $500. Those donors' names will be listed on the website, and thank you to those organizations and the people that run those organizations, as well as J. Patrick and Linda Smith for their generosity as well. Next, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, and there is just one public hearing matter this evening, as I mentioned earlier. It is the potential approval of a right-of-way easement vacation at 5932 Abbott Avenue South, and Director Milner has this matter. Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We have an application to vacate easements at 5932 Abbott Avenue South. It's embodied in Resolution 2021-12. The area in question is noted here, so that there's a 10-foot, existing 10-foot easement adjacent to an alley. The applicant has requested we vacate five feet of that or half of it, so the area in green, which would be closer to a potential home, they're asking to vacate that five feet. The red arrow is the five feet we would maintain, maintain that easement. So we support the vacation area. The private utilities have no issues, and we would recommend motion to close this public hearing at noon on January 25th and to continue the action on this item at the February 2nd city council meeting, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Does any member of the council have a question for Director Milner? At this point in time? Okay. I'm going to open this matter up now for public testimony. Is there anyone in the, let's go through our, let's go through the numbers again, just in case people don't, didn't write down for the call. So we're now going to hear from those residents who would like to provide testimony in this public hearing matter. Remember, the number is 800-374-0221. The conference ID number is 997-9683, 997-9683. An operator will ask for your name and address. They'll get you in the queue to speak, and then Director Bennerott will bring you in before the council, and then you'll have three minutes to speak, and Manager Neil will be the timekeeper. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody in the queue that wishes to testify regarding this matter?
At this time, I do not have anyone in the queue. As a reminder, if you'd like to speak, please press star one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number one. Because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, I would recommend we wait a minute or so before moving on. My clock shows that it's 7:16, so I'll come back to you either when I have a speaker or 7:17, whichever is first.
Thank you.
It is now 7:17, and I do not have anyone in the queue to speak, so I think you may move on with your agenda.
All right, thank you, Director Bennerott. While we were waiting to see if anybody wanted to testify, did any of the council members have a question that came to mind for Director Milner? If not, would someone entertain making a motion to close the public hearing at noon on January 25th, 2021, and continue the action on this item to the February 2nd, 2021 city council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Member Staunton moves. Member Jackson seconds. Any further discussion with respect to the motion as stated? All right, roll call, please. Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The motion is approved. The hearing on this matter, the public hearing on it, will close at noon on January 25th, 2021, and this matter is continued for action to the February 2nd, 2021 city council meeting. Next, we're going to move on to reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and the first matter we have there is involving the, what we have been calling the 6,600 to 6,800 France Avenue proposed project, involves different elements. I'm going to have Director Teague introduce it. There's several actions that are required, and Director Teague, why don't you set the stage for us, and I don't know if there was anything further that council members had in the way of questions for either you or the applicant. I see the applicants on the, on the line. We could ask those, or my next thought would be that we could go into a council discussion before we have any kind of a vote on this matter. So Director Teague, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So as mentioned, the council's asked to take action on this development project. You held the public hearing at your last meeting, asked questions. The public hearing remained open until noon of last week. We did receive 22 comments on Better Together. Those have been included within your packet, and there were two voicemails that have been transcribed also, mainly in opposition of the project. Some of the concerns that were raised included concerns in regard to the water treatment plant, the height and density of the project, length of construction, traffic generated and parking. So you have two resolutions in front of you this evening and an ordinance. The first resolution is action in regard to whether an environmental impact statement is needed. So we're asking that you adopt the resolution that declares that an EIS or an environmental impact statement is not needed. Should the council approve the project? We believe that those impacts would be covered through conditions of approval in regard to traffic, stormwater, things that were brought up as part of the environmental assessment worksheet. We do have Ashley Payne with us this evening, who prepared that on the city's behalf to answer any questions that you may have. The second resolution is in regard to the rezoning or the zoning ordinance amendment that would establish a new PUD zoning district. There are two resolutions within your packet. One is for approval and one is for denial. Staff and the planning commission are recommending the denial resolution that's before you. The planning commission vote was unanimous. Lastly, is the zoning ordinance amendment. Should the council choose to approve the project, we would ask that you grant first reading of that zoning ordinance amendment that basically revises the existing PUD that's on the site today. Second reading would come at the time of final rezoning, where the applicant comes back and finalizes, finalizes their plans. We do also have Mike Spack with us, who did the traffic study, should you have any questions in that regard. So with that, I'll turn it back to the city council for your discussion or any additional questions.
All right. Do any council members have questions for staff or for the applicant? All right. Mr. McIntosh is with us if we need to ask him any questions. And Mr. McIntosh, depending on how this conversation goes, I may come back to you for some decision-making before a vote. We'll see what happens here. I'm wondering if, if a member Anderson would lead us off on his comments and, I think that would be, as a, as a person who's been on the council now for a couple of years, I think he'd be good to lead off the conversation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to do so. Actually, earlier today, I asked Director Teague to send me the existing, the currently approved site plan. There was a project that was approved by the council in 2017. He has that and it's available. I don't know that it's absolutely necessary to pull it up. I took a very good look at it today, and what struck me was that it's basically to open this, the green space, the trees were left intact, it was very accessible to the neighborhood. It was, it was far more of a community asset than what I'm currently seeing in this proposal. And I do recall that Mr. McIntosh on June 5th referenced the economic difficulties with executing that plan. And while I don't really have a question for Mr. McIntosh as such, and I want to acknowledge as well that between the sketch plan review and the public hearing, that your development team did a, made an effort to try to expand or refine, I guess, your proposal. But the economic and feasibility of that project struck a note with me. I feel as if there's a good project on that site that's somewhere in there. Frankly, the 2017 approval was, while it was extremely attractive, it was actually somewhat modest by what we've currently seen, and, and yet at the same time, I do see the, the, your desire to create more density, more. To me, it looks like the biggest problem that you have, and it really goes to the core, the heart of, of the, of the issue, is the constraints that are established by seeking the density that you're seeking and leaving the existing building, really, it creates an impasse, almost an impasse, of recognizing the design guidelines and, and not encroaching on the, on the existing, on carnea, on the existing residential neighborhood. So I don't view the design as transitional, which is what we're seeking along France, on the west side of France there. It's, it just seems to be self-contained, and I, I also note that the, that the planning commission denied it unanimously. I noticed the, the staff denial, and I, while I'd love to see a great and exciting project on that site, I can't support this one.
All right. Thank you, Member Anderson. I really appreciate you leading the way here.
Of course.
And, Member Jackson, would you care to go next and give us your, some of your thoughts?
Certainly. This is an interesting puzzle because it really had two pretty clear brake lines on who supported it and who didn't. So I kind of wanted to look at this through the lens of my values and, and the way I want to make decisions. Edina, we talk about wanting to be a great place, a desirable place to live, work, and to play, and sometimes those things are in conflict, and this is one of those situations, I believe. We had lots of comments from the neighbors opposing this, and then comments from our business community supporting it. The height, the mass, the noise, the construction concerns from the neighbors versus the need to create a desirable place to have offices and to work is how I see the, the conflict set up here. And Mr. Teague told us that the standard is, does the project justify greater height and density? And so to do that, I looked at our common values, and Member Anderson touched on this, and some of the neighbors raised that they really want something that is an attraction, and I think in Edina, we really value innovative design and innovations. And so I thought, what, what is it that we would, how do we define that? And our Southdale Small Area Plan is really, I think, innovation on city design and the next generation of suburbs, and we've got the Design Experience Guidelines to flesh that out. It represents a common agreement among stakeholders in our city, and it took four years to put together, and it's, it's an important pair of documents, and we're still learning how to apply those documents to development decisions. And this is probably the second one. It is the second one, since they were approved, and it's interesting to sort of look and see how do we apply that. Now, there were several elements of the Design Experience Guidelines that were overridden for this proposal. The first one was the 200-foot grid, which to me is the heart of the Southdale Area Plan, to take these super blocks and break them into smaller blocks. As also mentioned by Member Anderson, there, it calls for transition zone here. This project does not provide that transition zone. The area guidelines call for a Western Promenade. The Western Promenade is not part of the center part to make this a walkable north-south connection to the rest of the city. And again, connectivity by walking isn't there, especially coming from that 68th Street intersection. It doesn't connect you to France Avenue or to Southdale. So we've lost a lot of that walking connectivity that's called for in the guidelines. So are there other innovations here? Is there other design to this that is going to benefit the city? And sort of looking at the project on its own merits, there were other public amenities talked about for this. There's the stormwater management. Now, they are providing, this project does provide stormwater management, but I noted in the environmental assessment worksheet that the Department of Natural Resources prefers to have a holding pond instead of the rain gardens and the, and the tanks that are proposed for this. And I think, you know, again, a lake or a pond would have been a public amenity. We've got the rain gardens. One of the commenters pointed out that as a landscape architect, she didn't think that rain gardens aged very well and were a little less desirable way to manage stormwater. We talked about a fire station that was set aside, and the water treatment center is certainly something that is needed in that area, and that is a public benefit. And so that, that, it's on the plus side of this, but without the walkability and the stormwater, better stormwater treatment, it's, it's only one thing. And so finally, we're left with the building as, or the set of buildings as they are. And one of the things that really gummed up the ability to apply to the Design Experience Guidelines are these existing office are these existing office buildings. And they're very nice buildings and they need to be upgraded. I understand that. But in this design, they are pretty much eclipsed by larger buildings surrounding it. So in the effort to save these buildings, we've given up a lot of public benefit. And in the end, it is just heightened density for heightened density. And to me, that does not justify the greater heightened density. So I'm looking at denial.
Thank you. Member Pierce, would you care to share your thoughts as well?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. There's just a few comments. One, I do, I like the fact that we had several residents who, while they were not in favor of the project, just about everybody I talked to recognized that we needed to do some development. And I think whenever you approach a project and you hear what I'm gonna, I'm gonna call this reasonableness within our community to say, yep, we need, we need to do some development. We understand if it's going to be here. I felt like there was some support there for a project. And so I think that is, that's really good for us as a city to know that we have residents that see that. I won't repeat a lot of what Member Anderson and Member Jackson talked about. I agree with all of their comments. I am not a developer. I'm not an engineer. I'm not gonna profess to tell you how to design a site for development. But what I can tell you is, for me, it is difficult, and I mentioned it in the last meeting, that if we have a site that was approved, a plan in 2017, it still boggles my mind that we don't have a developer that would come forward with that plan and say, yep, here we go, we can develop this and here's what the cost is, right? So I talked about what are the constraints that keep us from doing that? But I kind of flip that on the other side of the coin. And I kind of feel like it's unfair as a city to a developer that if that is our standard, right? If that's our standard of what we want to see at that site. And I mentioned, it's beautiful, just like Member Jackson said, lots of green space. It's, the transitions are wonderful. I heard residents say, is this a place that people will want to come to? Well, that 2017 plan, just looking at it, I would teleport myself there on a nice day. So it's a great site. But I think we have an issue as a city if that's our standard. Because I don't know that we can build that, that site. And so if that is true, if that assertion is true, that there are constraints that would keep us from being able to build that particular project, then I think frankly, we have some work to do to figure out what is a viable, what are viable, what's a viable project that would meet all of the standards that we want as a city? What would be a project that could be built there? And so I think that's a little bit of work that we have to do as a city. And then the last thing I would say, just on principle, it's really hard for me to vote yes for something when the commission or staff was unanimous in no. So that will be tough for me to find justification to go against a group of people that I view as being experts and that we've tasked with responsibility of reviewing these projects and then presenting us with a docket of information to help make better decisions. And so it will be tough for me to go against that. And then the last thing I would say, and this is probably more of a question, and I don't know that it has to be answered tonight. Member Jackson talked about the existing buildings that we were gonna leave in the middle of that site. And I certainly understand why that would be. But it, the question I have, which I think really tees up the dilemma between the developer, the council, and the community. If you could build the 2017 site by scraping the current site, then that opens up other issues of how long that development might last. We heard comments about the dust and the noise. And so it does create a different type of a site, of construction site, if we were to scrape that entire piece and then develop on top of that. But that really is the question, if we were to scrape it, what might that look like? And I say again, I don't know that we have to have an, I need an answer to that tonight, for that tonight. Because where I am today, I could not support this particular project.
All right. Thank you. Member Pierce, Member Staunton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, I'll try not to repeat the comments that my colleagues have made, but I do want to start by talking a little bit about the design guidelines in the district plan and why they're appropriate standards by which we ought to judge this project. You know, we've got, some of the comments that we got were suggesting that, you know, this is a dramatic change in the zoning, we shouldn't change the zoning, et cetera. As we talked about on the 70th and France area, this, this is really what the tools that we have now, and we're fortunate to have them, to have the Design Experience Guidelines in the district plan, in order to determine whether we're going to approve these kinds of changes. Back in 2017, when we approved the plan that folks have talked about, we didn't have any. We had some principles, the beginnings of that process, but we didn't have the Design Experience Guidelines and we didn't have the district plan. They were created out of really the 2008 comprehensive plan, which identified areas like this as areas of potential change in the community. We recognized that there was going to be redevelopment pressure. And in fact, it has happened in exactly the areas that we expected it. And so we invested, and I remember this was right when I started on the council in 2015, and we appointed a group of people and we spent almost four years of significant, you know, community resources, financial resources, staff resources, developing this, these tools for evaluating these kinds of projects. And it's important that we now use them. And I know at our last meeting, there was some discussion about whether, whether these tools or, you know, the Design Experience Guidelines are called guidance kind of, or guidelines and that they shouldn't be, you know, we shouldn't require compliance to every, every corner of the document. And that's true. They are guidance and they ought to be used judiciously. But we also can't let the word guidance mean that we're not gonna use them at all because that would be a real disservice to the people and the resources that have gone into creating them. So I think it's really important for us to look at this project through the lens of the district plan and Design Experience Guidelines. And you recall that the Design Experience Guidelines are really what the district plan talked about in terms of the implementation. They were the tools to try to accomplish the goals that were in the design in the district plan. And so I've spent a lot of time, both with the 70th and France project and with this one, talking about this notion of how does, how do they match up with the district, with the Design Experience Guidelines? And I think one of the things that's really important to remember is they're not just design guidelines, they're Design Experience Guidelines. And I think that word experience is probably the most important part of the title. And Mick Johnson, in some of, in the letter that he wrote in November, talked about the notion of a human experience, that the Design Experience Guidelines are crafted to try to help make sure there is a good human experience in these places that we're trying to create. And I think that this one fails to create that kind of human experience, mostly because it's dominated by office buildings and parking ramps. It has, and I, and I would disagree slightly with some of my colleagues. I am not convinced that the existing buildings prevent this from being a good site. I think that it has two major east-west rights streets that could provide the kind of street rooms that the Design Experience Guidelines are looking for. But these in this plan end up being streets without the rooms, mostly because they're merely pathways to get people from their cars to their parking spots or in their cars to their parking spots and from their parking spots to their office buildings. There's no other reasons to be on those streets. They're not rooms. I think also that we have on the site a lot of extraneous pavement that is designed to allow cars to get to every nook and cranny of the entire site. And it's unnecessary. I think if you focus on those two east-west streets, those could be really signature streets if they created the kind of room and human experience we're looking for. So I think it, the one, one of the problems here is that it fails on this human experience level. The other is that it really fails this transition notion. And a couple of my colleagues have talked about that. You know, part of what this site needs to do is provide a transition from the residential neighborhood to the west into the core of the district that's on the eastern side. And one of the things in the Design Experience Guidelines that helps do that is the West Promenade notion. And this site, unlike the previous site design, really doesn't do that at all. And there were a couple of opportunities for that to happen. One was within the site, like the 2017 plan that had the Roanoke, that at least provided a pedestrian notion of going north to south pedestrians and cyclists. And, and I think the configuration of the site in this, in this design fails to do that by putting a building, basically blocking that, that pathway north to south. And instead of creating that connectivity and that kind of pathway and that promenade, it pisses it off. But even without that, there is an opportunity on the west of the site to create that on the edge on Valley View Road. And I think this really misses a huge opportunity to do that, to create a, that kind of medium-density housing along the western side that starts to invite the neighborhood, to make the neighborhood feel like it's part of the neighborhood as opposed to what exists now, which is really the backs of parking ramps that are facing the neighborhood. And I think that misses a real big piece of what we're trying to accomplish with the Design Experience Guidelines. So for me, at the end, the bottom line is that I think the site design was done backwards. I think that the applicant worked on the buildings they wanted and then created the pathways between them and created this car storage that was necessary to service them instead of starting with the public realm and working the buildings around it. And so I can't support the project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Risan. Thanks to the rest of you as well. I was struck by, in the public hearing, by the presentation of the applicant. One of the things Mr. McIntosh said got me thinking. He said, you know, we're, we acknowledge that we're not meeting all of the Design Experience Guidelines, but we're meeting some of them and we're capturing the spirit of the guidelines in their opinion. And that was based around the fact that they didn't have a clean site like at U.S. Bank. They had a site where they wanted to retain those two buildings, which is understandable to me. They've got, I think there was, if I recall correctly, an estimated market value of around $50 million and they're trying to make something work around those two existing buildings, which is identical to what they were trying to do back in 2017. And, and so the question became, and I think Mr. McIntosh raised this in a, in a real interesting sort of way, was that is, let's see if I can articulate it. Should we make incremental steps towards the vision of the Design Experience Guidelines? Or put another way, are projects that partially adopt the Design Experience Guidelines okay? Well, maybe sometimes they're okay. Maybe sometimes they aren't. I don't think any of us have said that a project has to meet every single guideline because then they become standards, but they, in order to be approved. When I look back at some of the testimony, again, from Mr. McIntosh talking about the factors to consider in a development project, you look at those three different factors, the community desires, market realities, and economic feasibility. Community desires is, in my experience, is a real mixed bag. I mean, it is not a monolithic situation. What the public wants is not monolithic. And our job is not to count noses over who wants something, who doesn't want something to occur. The other two elements of it, market realities and economic feasibility, are interesting aspects of it in this particular circumstance for me. Because I keep thinking about what parts of this project are working and what parts aren't working for me yet. And does it lead us to a point in time where, based on market realities, we have to think about, do we want to do this one project at a time? Because the future now, as we all know and are experiencing ourselves, is changing every day. So how can we go about master planning this site and taking, you know, creating anxiety for people that live nearby around something that may never come to fruition? Because the market realities are gonna change over the next decade. People worry about a decade-long period of construction. We know that's not the way construction works. Some folks worry about the apartment building up on the northeast corner. And I will say, Mr. Prashati, that the buildings that you have designed are beautiful. And I think it's, what's bothering me is that we're not maximizing the use of the site. And people have expressed this in different ways. I feel that the west side, I wouldn't do liner housing over there. That's, you're gonna get a variety of different opinions here. But I think preserving as much green space on the west side is really important. It's all the structured parking, I think, that bothers me. And then the building in the middle, the office building, with the parking, surface, continuing surface parking along France Avenue. Here you are, you want to be on France Avenue, but you put, you put surface parking lot right on France Avenue. To me, that we should, a consideration should have been given to turning that building so it faces France Avenue, so you capture the benefit of being on France Avenue. You turn the beauty of the building on its long side, on the long axis to France Avenue. And you do something like what they did over at 70th and France. You put underground parking there for one level. And then you have an active street room, as Member Staunton talks about. And then you have structured parking up above that hidden in the building. The height doesn't bother me in terms of what you might put there on France Avenue. You know, I say that with some reservation. And so parts of this are beginning to work. I feel like the north part, particularly the northeast part, is beginning to work. That's a beautiful building up there. It's sited nicely on the site. I feel like P3, I think it is, which is the parking ramp with the liner housing on the outside, is a bit too large. I think it encroaches too much on the site. The notion of it is good. But these parking garages, like you've got to the west and then to the southwest, and then the surface parking right on France Avenue. I think a member Staunton put it really well. You know, when we did the, we call it now the Nolan Mainz Project down at 49th and France, and we looked for someone to do that development work down there. The people that got that job were the ones that came with the, built it from the ground up. They figured out how pedestrians would move through there first. And then we, they built the buildings to fit in for the pedestrian, with the pedestrian movements. Here on this site, the same two streets are in here on your plan that are in there from the beginning. The one in front of the building that I happen to have an office in on 6800, I don't really see anything different about that. I mean, it's a little bit of an improvement. But it's a parking ramp across to the south, which is what would have been on the 2017 plan, but a different, a little differently. But the one to the north off 6600, the one that is, requires inside knowledge to get from France to Valley View and vice versa, those streets aren't clearly delineated. And I think that Member Staunton is making a great point about the street room concept. We haven't captured that yet. So when, when Member Pierce talks about how he could transport himself into that 2017 into that 2017 plan, I think one of the reasons is because, like 50th and France, Dean DeVolus and the team that took on that project in 2017 hid the parking, for the most part, behind France Avenue. And you haven't done that. You've got that parking lot right up on prime real estate, surface lot on prime real estate, right along France Avenue. And then you've got the building turned east-west, and I think, I, I personally don't like that. I think there was some argument about the medical building should more properly be up north. I think that's a decent sort of argument. That's a long way of telling you, I don't think we got this thing right yet. And Mr. McIntosh, if you've heard, you've, you've heard what people have said, I wanted in the worst way to figure out a way to support this, because I thought that there was, in fact, a decent argument that you advanced about incremental progress, and that sometimes the increment may be fine, but the more I studied this, the more I thought, no, we're not there yet. So for me, as I said, the north end's beginning to work. The parking garages aren't doing what I think is appropriate for the site. I think it could be greened up better. The street rooms could be defined better. The passages from east to west could be better defined, as streets that engage pedestrians and not, don't become just passers, a little better than they are now. And so I'm going to give you this opportunity to withdraw your application facing a 5-0 denial so that you don't get stuck in a position where you have to wait a year to come back? Because we don't, I don't think any of us want you to wait a year to come back. We want you to come back. We want you to embrace these ideas, think about what we're talking about. Think about how, how it might be more important to come back with a single project, and so that we don't have to try to guess what's going to happen in the future, and people don't have to have high anxiety about what you're proposing happen in the future when it may never happen because of those market realities. So if you want to withdraw it, I think that would, this would be an appropriate time to do it. If you don't, we'll, we'll vote on it. And then you're facing a, a year before you can come back.
Mayor and counsel, everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you for your consideration this evening. I cannot speak to my client's, you know, desires within the next year. They have taken two bites at this apple, so I'm not going to speculate as to what they will or will not do over the course of the next year. But I think in the interest of maintaining the greatest flexibility, we will request to withdraw our application for the zoning ordinance amendment and preliminary rezoning and the revised overall development plan. We would ask that the council continue to vote to adopt Resolution 2021-23, which is regarding the EAW and the negative declaration for an EIS at the site.
Let me, thank you, Mr. McIntosh, for those comments. Let me ask Director Teague, if, if they come back with a different project, or they come back with a single element of a project at a subsequent time, do you want us to deal with that EAW issue now or in the future?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, yes, I think it would be appropriate to act on the EAW. If they were to come back with a proposal that, where the square footage exceeds what was studied in the EAW, we may need to do some revisions there. But otherwise, if it's still within that same density, this declaration will, should cover any future, future development. I might add, if we could, being we're in the virtual world, with a withdraw, we need it in writing. If I could ask Mr. McIntosh to send me an email to that effect? We're not up against the, the 60-day rule this evening. We've got, oh, into February, but if I could get that in writing, that would be appreciated.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Staunton?
I'm wondering if we can hear from the, our Kimley Horn folks on the EAW. I'm, I'm curious as to whether the, the analysis of the EAW is the same depending on, depending on the project, you know? So if somebody came back with a project that had the same square footage or density or something less, does that necessarily mean that the EAW would turn out the same way? If you understand the question I'm asking.
I do, yeah. But I think, I think it's a more artful way of asking the same question I asked.
Yeah. Hi, members of the council. Ashley Payne from Kimley Horn again. As far as the EAW, if a proposal comes in that's actually less than the density or what is proposed right now, it'd still be covered under the same EAW. So if there is a slight change to the project, the EAW would still be covered on that. Right now, the resolution that's out there is to approve a negative declaration for an EIS, essentially meaning that the EAW that was completed is sufficient and there is no need for an EIS. So if, if there was to be a, a vote to not approve that, essentially the council is saying that an EIS would be necessary for the proposed project, which I don't think that's what you all are trying to do at this point. But again, like, Mr. Teague had said, if a proposal comes in that might have some changes in density, maybe increased square footage or residential units or something like that, at that time, you can do a reevaluation to determine if the mitigation strategies as outlined in the EAW are still sufficient, or if there might be some potential changes needed.
All right. Member Staunton, would you entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-123? Or would you move that with respect to the specific action, making a negative declaration of the need for an EIS or an EIW?
So I just, I, maybe a little more...
More, more plumbing on it?
Yeah. Ms. Payne, if you can just, and I, your, your head is way further into this than mine is, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking to make a negative declaration that somehow this requires an EIS. What I'm, what I'm worried about is an entirely different kind of project that may have the same square footage or may have the same density. Does that necessarily lead to the same result in terms of the EIS?
So, so if there is a change in the project, you could just do a reevaluation on that? So let's say that you are around the same square footages as what the current proposal is now, just maybe a change in footprint or just layout or something like that. What you could do at that point is you could do a, kind of a, a reevaluation to determine if the impacts are comparable to what was proposed in the EAW that would be approved. And if not, it could be something that could be amended at that point. So you'd, you'd look at the same analysis. It would just be determining if the impacts and the mitigation strategies as outlined would be sufficient for the new development.
And what is the downside of just not acting on the EAW because we don't really have a project that we're talking about approving?
So I guess I'd be looking to city staff too on this, but as far as the, what's up on the table right now is for, just to determine an, a negative declaration. So the EA process, our EAW process is essentially complete. We've gone through the public notice. They've identified the impacts and then the potential, or the mitigation strategies as outlined. So at this point, it's just determining if an EIS is necessary. And so if it is approved that an EIS is not necessary for this project, essentially that document is kind of shelved. And if a new project comes in and is under the same square footages or potential residential units, at that point, you could do a reevaluation to see if it's covered.
If I may add to that, I thi, I think no matter what the next iteration is of a proposal here, we're gonna, we're gonna have to reevaluate the whole EAW anyway. You know, there could be, there could be more housing, more retail. So we're gonna have to do that evaluation anyway. We would still need to do a parking study, a traffic study. So I think we would do it under the umbrella of, of looking at the EAW also for any, any new project.
So why would we, why would we take action on the EAW tonight if we're not going to take action on the rest of the project? That's what I'm struggling with.
So the question is, do we even need to do this if the project is denied?
Or withdrawn?
I see our city attorney has turned on his camera.
Well, I just have the same question that Member Staunton has, I think. If the application is withdrawn, why isn't the EAW similarly withdrawn? And if there's a new project put forth and a new EAW, or, you know, the, the, the EAW on a subsequent project could take into account the findings if the projects are similar, but why would we take any action on EAW that's been, for a project that's been withdrawn? That's my question. If, if there's a, a reason from the Kimley Horn staff that, that answers that question, I, I'd just like to know the answer.
Yeah, and I'm not looking to, to waste anybody's time or money. I mean, it seems like all this work has been done. It can be kept in the file. And if there's the exact same thing, we don't have to go through it again, unless somebody's telling me that's wrong.
And as I pull up the resolution, I, I think we're having a good discussion here because the, the resolution portion of 2021-23 states now therefore be resolved that the city council, the city VDNA hereby makes a negative declaration of need regarding an environmental impact statement for the 6600 to 6800 France Avenue Development Project. Well, it's, it's tied specifically to this project. And if the project's withdrawn, I suppose you could technically make this decision now, and then Mr. McIntosh could withdraw his project, but that, that seems a bit odd too. So maybe the better course of action is the one that Member Staunton and our attorney are thinking about, is just you, you defer on this until later. What are the, what are the, what are the negatives in deferring until we see something additional in the way of a project? Is there a cost factor for the applicant? Is there a cost factor for the city? Is there...
Does the, does the EAW go stale at a certain point? Does it have a, a shelf life? Ms. Payne?
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that was me that was going to answer that. No, an EAW does not expire. There's no expiration date on that. Obviously, if an EAW has been sitting on the shelf for, you know, five years or something like that, you'd want to reevaluate to make sure that the rules and regulations are still consistent and the mitigation strategies are still consistent with, you know, what would be required by the city. But there is no expiration date on that document.
Thanks.
It just seems to me that if there's a potential for making a negative declaration that an EIS is not required, but then there's also potential to reevaluate if a new project proposal comes forth, that, that reevaluation, you could imagine a situation where an EIS would be called for. So I, I don't think the council should necessarily make a declaration that EIS is not called for if there's the potential we may have to reevaluate. But I'd just like to try to confirm with city staff, there's, I'm not misunderstanding the posture.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me. The way, the way the resolution reads, if there's no development project, there's really no need to adopt that resolution. And any new project, we're gonna reevaluate an EAW. That cost is borne by the applicant, so it is, that's the developer's responsibility for those costs, so there would be additional costs there. That said, we do have the document. We can, can use it as part of that reevaluation.
Ms. Payne, if the applicant came back with a different project that the council and the planning commission were more inclined to approve, that was similar in nature to this one, but met some of the elements that we've all talked about, could they, could they use this existing work that they've paid for in part, even though it wasn't, we didn't make a decision tonight regarding the declaration?
Yeah, they could, they could reuse parts, parts of the document. They could reuse the document if they come back with an application that is similar to what is proposed in the EAW.
That said, we would still need to follow this same process, you know, as part of that reevaluation. We would need to make this, this declaration that's in front of you this evening at that time.
Yeah, I, I just, when I read the entire resolution, everything is, it's all bound up into 6600 to 6800 development plan that we've got in front of us. And so it seems to me that we shouldn't approve it.
Is this, is the EAW subject to the 60-day rule?
That I'm not sure. I would look to our city attorney on that one.
Well, it's, I doubt that it is because it's not in a, I don't think it falls under 1599, but I also don't understand why we would take action on something that, for a project that's otherwise been withdrawn. I, I'm not suggesting...
Seems to me, seems to me it's part of the whole application. Why, if they're going to withdraw the application, they should withdraw the application.
I, Member Staunton, I, I agree with that. I'm not suggesting that they should start from scratch by any means. I think that they could likely use most of this work if the project they put forth in the future is similar, but I don't think we should take action on any portion of an application that's been withdrawn.
Mr. McIntosh, I'm going to turn back to you. Do you want to withdraw the, based on the conversation, wanted to withdraw your entire application, including the EAW?
Not a lot of clarity out of that one. I will say that we saw value in the negative declaration because there is a cost to go through that application process. And my understanding was that if we brought forth a project that had a density less than what we had originally proposed, and, and I thought maybe even there was a cushion up to 100% of the density that we had proposed, it would not require us to go through that EAW application process again to arrive at the same negative declaration for an EIS. So I'm still not clear if there is risk to the city to approve that and save the owners of this site that time and cost for a future project, as opposed to withdrawing that application or that resolution now at this time.
Can I just make a comment on that too? So for the EAW process, if the, the development comes in, so an EAW, if a negative declaration i, is approved at city council tonight, the document process would be finalized. The findings would get published. There would be a resolution. This would be a document that would be valid. If a development scenario came in with the same square footages as what is proposed now, but potentially would have a different footprint or something, you wouldn't necessarily need to go through the full EAW process again, meaning it would need to go out for public comment. The 30-day public comment, go back through, essentially, the city would just evaluate that project against what was proposed in the EAW. And like I said, the, the impacts and the mitigation measures that were outlined in that EAW. If the project changes slightly, the city could still evaluate that proposed project with what was, what was presented as part of the EAW and what was covered in the EAW. We have done that in some other municipalities where an EAW was approved. At some point, that project changed slightly, so it was just kind of a, a checkbox to make sure that everything still falls under what was proposed under the EAW, or the mitigation that, the mitigation strategies outlined are still valid for that new project or that change in the project.
Did that help folks on the council decide one way or the other on whether to, so Director Teague, back to you, I guess, what, what's the staff recommendation that might, that might be influential here and helpful?
Yeah, my initial thought was to make the negative declaration. That way, we still have that document to compare any... That way, we still have that document to compare any additional change. You know, if it is a substantial change, we may have to reevaluate and maybe go through this EAW process. But my thinking was it still covered us for a revised plan that were to come in, still holding within the densities that are proposed here.
Ms. Payne, do you see any downside risk for the council in adopting this proposed resolution that would make a negative declaration of need regarding an EIS?
I don't at this time. I know that the EAW and the proposed project kind of are one in the same as far as, you know, what is being proposed for the other resolution is the same project that was being presented in the EAW. But the EAW is a separate process to get through and to approve the project. I would say if the EAW is finalized, as far as the negative declaration at this point, as Director Teague has said, you have that document that's there, that's finalized. So if the applicant were to come in in the next few months with a proposal for a project that is still in the same parameters as what was presented now, maybe just a different footprint or layout or something like that, you still have that document that's in place.
To add more confusion to the issue, from what I'm hearing from the council, too, we're not necessarily minor tweaks away from coming back with a revised plan. So maybe it is best to not act on the resolution and essentially we're starting over.
Well, can I ask Ms. Payne? This would be a negative declaration stating that no EIS is required. But then if there's a new proposal put forth, there would be additional evaluation. Can you imagine a situation where that additional evaluation would then indicate an EIS would be required so that this negative declaration would no longer be correct?
I guess it depends on what comes forward with the new project. If there is a significant change in density or something like that, I'm trying to think of a category or something that was covered in the EAW that would trigger a significant environmental effect as outlined in the EAW or as what would be required to need an EIS. I'm not sure that would be it. I guess until you see a revised development plan, I'm not sure what would trigger that. I mean, the EAW process for this project or for this type of project is pretty standard in the Twin Cities metro area as far as just getting covered with an EAW.
Could you foresee any kind of situation? This is a segue from our city attorney, David Kendall's question, where the city, by passing this negative declaration tonight, could find themselves in a position where further environmental impact evaluation was necessary or remediation measures needed to be taken as part of a new project, but we couldn't do it because of the former passage of this negative declaration? If that makes sense?
Yeah, I think it does. I think part of that is just with the new project that would come in, I think the city would request the applicant or the city's consultant to reevaluate traffic if there's any changes to roadway or density. They would have to reevaluate, you know, stormwater. They would have to reevaluate utilities. I think those are kind of the big things that would be identified or that have potential for environmental impacts or potential mitigation. But a new project would be required to go through and evaluate what type of permits or approvals that would be required by the state and local agencies, which is similar to what's in the EAW. I mean, with a new proposal, the city could request the applicant to kind of do a comparison for what was presented previously as part of the CAW and what the new proposal is, just to see, is it comparable in impacts and proposed mitigation or potential mitigation strategies? And if there's a change there, then they can work through that at that point.
Mr. Mayor?
Member Jackson?
Yes, I'm looking at the resolution, and this is a pretty specific document. Section 1.04 really lays out exactly the buildings that we're talking about. And you raised this initially, this resolution really is tied to this specific proposal. And I understand wanting to, you know, not have to go through the whole process and the costs involved. But I'm really concerned about passing something with this level of specificity at this point.
Well, Director Teague, we could act on this one way or the other right now. Mr. McIntosh has expressed that he is going to withdraw the application for preliminary approval, which, you know, takes us away from the idea of having to approve or disapprove Resolution 2021-22 in 2016. Could we just make a motion one way or the other and get this on the table and get it resolved?
If I understood that correctly, make the motion on the development to deny the development first?
No, just the EAW. Deal with the EAW in isolation.
Why don't we just continue it? It seems like there's a ton of unanswered questions. And the applicant can figure out whether they want to include that in the withdrawal or if they want us to consider it. Then that would give staff the opportunity to deal with the wrinkle we've got here. If we're not up against any timeline, why not just continue it and figure out how to solve it at the staff level?
Yeah, it's a good, real good thought.
We can be prepared to do that by February 2nd.
Yeah, and if you don't, I mean, I don't know if the rest of the application is, where is that on the timeline?
Yeah, the deadline is your second council meeting in February.
So what if we just continued this and staff could come back at the February 1 meeting after the applicant has figured out what they want to do exactly with this and staff has had a chance to look at those things?
We could do that.
All right, is there a motion to continue this matter involving the 6,600 to 6,800 France Avenue proposed development and all the attendant resolutions attached thereto to the first meeting in February? Was that February 1st or what was that date, February 5th?
February 2nd, Groundhog.
February 2nd?
We'll do it all over again. All right, so moved.
Your second?
I'll second.
Member Jackson seconds. Member Staunton's motion to continue this matter for further discussion to February 2nd, City Council meeting on February 2nd, 2021. Further discussion? Roll call, please. Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Motion's approved. This matter is continued for further action on February 2nd, 2021. All right, next is sketch plan review for 4917 Eden Avenue. And Director Teague has this matter as well.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm just going to give a quick, brief introduction. Did my PowerPoint come up?
It's coming. You're starting to share content. It's there now.
Okay, I'm having some bandwidth issues here on my end tonight. So this is a sketch plan review for the site that's kitty corner to City Hall. It's where the existing Perkins Restaurant is. So just west of the golf course along Highway 100. Property is zone planned commercial district and automobile parking district. There was a time when we zoned parking lots for automobile parking specifically, and this site is one of them. There's a height restriction of four stories on the site. It's guided in our comprehensive plan for mixed use. So what the applicant is proposing here is to build a seven-story, 208-unit apartment building. They would provide 20% of the units within the project for affordable housing and then also build a 52,000-square-foot office building on the west side of the site. So this site is impacted by our Grand View Transportation Study. The diagram on the screen, this is a document from that study, and it shows a new off-ramp off of Highway 100 that, as you can see, would go right through where that office building is located. The idea in the plan is to eliminate the on-ramp and off-ramp that come in just west of City Hall. So there would just be an off-ramp to the south and then the on-ramp on the north side of 50th. So the applicant has provided an option B with that roadway running through the site without the office building. So some of the concerns that staff has with option A, just want to quickly point out that the Floraia ratio is rather high at 3.0. Floraia ratio compares the square footage of all the buildings within the project to the area of a site. For comparison, the 70th and France project that the council just approved, the FAR on that one was 2.1. With option B, the FAR goes down to 2.4, which is still on the high side, but it's solely residential. Part of what we want to consider with FAR is the traffic that's generated from the uses from the site. And with residential use, the traffic generated isn't as much. But with that office building, there would be traffic generated. So for part of your discussion, if the council could discuss those options, staff would support the option B as it does help us accomplish the Grand View Transportation Plan. With us this evening is Nick Walton and Chris Pelkowitz to present a little more detail, show you the architecture of the buildings. But I just wanted to give you that context before we turned it over to the applicant. So I will stop sharing and turn it over to the applicant. Nick Walton, I believe, is going to begin.
Thank you. Mr. Walton, welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Pelkowitz as well?
Yes, good evening, Mayor.
All right, Chris, are you able to share that screen? There you go. So maybe I'll start, and then Chris and I'll get into this presentation. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for having us. I'm Nick Walton, as Carrie said, president of Royda Walton Development. I'd love to just give just a real little brief history on the company and kind of lead us here tonight, and then we'll get into the presentation. So on the company, we're local. We focus on urban projects with high design. Firstly, in my career, I worked on custom residential, single-family projects. I mentioned this last week, some of them are within a mile of this site. And we've always put an extra emphasis on design in our multifamily buildings and a couple of hotels that we've developed, bringing a lot of that prior experience into the multifamily world. By way of track record, we've now done 32 ground-up developments in the metro area. And part of our success in making all those happen, and really the only way to make them all happen, is collaboration with the cities that we work in and the surrounding neighborhood groups. So we were excited to talk with the planning commission last week and with you all tonight in this sketch plan setup and with nearby neighbors next. So two weeks ago, we sent out about 100 letters to neighbors in Sunny Slope and Gulf Terrace, letting them know that we were going to be proposing this project and reaching out. Some of them have already reached out to the development team. So our next step after these two sketch plan meetings will be to schedule a big meeting with nearby neighbors. And I also want to point out, especially when you're looking at this image that Chris has put up, I think it's important for everyone to know that even though this rendering looks really final, it's not. We're here to start a dialogue and incorporate feedback and then work with you all to help figure out which of these two options to focus on. That's a big part of our goal for tonight. I think it's also important to note, before we get into the actual presentation, that if this project proceeds, it's something the company plans to hold and operate for a long time. And we think that matters because that local approach is very different than when a national developer looks at a site and is likely much more bottom-line focused. Whereas we really focus on the process, which is the collaboration we're just talking about and then the actual details of the project, some of which we're going to really dive into tonight. We think that's what really sets buildings apart and can really make them special. So a little history on the site. We've been working on these preliminary plans for quite a few months. We think the site lends itself really well, especially in scenario one, to a mixed-use project focusing the housing portion towards the country club, the office portion on the highway. That way, the office is a sound and as well as a visual buffer for all the homes and also is placed on a spot that has great signage and presence right on the highway. And that, we think, is good for the office tenants and can help make them successful. When we think of the experience of the residential project, we vision a higher-end luxury living that fits in this beautiful country club location. About half our units would be two bedrooms with empty nesters in mind, people that are ready to downsize from their larger homes, but definitely aren't ready to leave the neighborhood and move into other multifamily areas like Southdale, for example. There are a bunch of amenities we've programmed in the building with those tenants in mind, some of which we're going to talk about in the presentation. And then, as Carrie pointed out, we do plan to include 20% of our units at 60% of AMI, speaking of affordability. So that's a little bit about us and just our sort of general approach as we get into the project. Chris, you want to start on that presentation, and then we can talk about the details?
All right, thanks, Mr. Walton.
Go, Chris.
There we go.
There you go.
All right, the software was not unmuting for me. So I apologize for the delay. Exactly. All right, hello, Mayor, City Council members. I am Chris Pelkowitz. I am an architect with BKB Group. We are a Minneapolis-based firm and have been practicing in the area for 42 years. And we are keenly experienced in Edina with working on the City Hall project and also on One Southdale Place. And I think the City Hall project and some of the experience from that and from some of the BKB team that worked on it have lent itself to the design that you see here in front of you as well. But we'll get into that a little more as we go through more of the information. I think people are very aware of the Perkins in the current site and the current area around it right now. But the one piece I just want to point out is Carrie spoke to the existing zoning on the site right now. And we really looked to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and the Grand View overlay and looking at some of the density and some of the guidelines within that that really led to us having a little bit more of a dense and a larger-scale project overall. Just a little bit more of the context, showing a little bit of the streets. And one of the pieces really with this is we are really looking at some of the aging infrastructure here and the relationship to the Edina Civic Spaces. and the relationship to the Edina Civic Spaces as the City Hall and the historic buildings to the north, and really wanting to upgrade that experience, upgrade the human and the pedestrian realm quite a bit, and then just really coming with a nice design and a high-level project. With that, our first option, option A, is the combination of the residence and the office with the office, as Nick mentioned, along Highway 100 on the west side of the site, and the residence being on the east side, opening the courtyard up to the country club. And then also deliberately placing itself very close to the street on Wilson Road and on Eden Avenue in order to activate that street experience. And we are, as you can see with the site, with the property line, where actually the site begins to pull back because there's the MinDOT land in this area. And I think that can be further discussed in the option B, as you'll see if it's still needed to be MinDOT land in the future. But, you know, it's certainly not within our property, so we're working to, working around it at this point. A few of the other items that we really focused on of this, of placing the building close to the street, is walkability, a street presence with walk-up units, and also recognizing that we are asking at the higher end of the density. So we are putting an art plaza at the corner, and you'll see, and if you noticed before, we had sculptures on that corner as well to really beautify the corner of being adjacent to City Hall. A little bit more of details within this plan. I'll zoom in here a little bit for everyone to see. We have a drop-off for guests and a few temporary spaces for, you know, Ubers and Bite Squad and other things like that to get those vehicles off the street, as there's no street parking here. The resident main entry is off of Wilson Road here for two levels of below-grade parking. I'll scroll back up just a little bit so that can be seen completely. But the two levels go completely under the entire project. And on the office side, we have a separate entry on Eden Avenue. And this was done in order to spread the traffic load to the two different streets so that we're not putting it all in one place. And we have a few convenience stalls on the site here, 27 or 28. And this is more for the visitors of the office space. And then there's a second ramp down, down to the larger ramp below. And the idea with the larger ramp below is that we would utilize shared parking in order to minimize the overall parking that would be required to be built. And that is just so that we don't end up over-parking the site in general. And what we're looking at right now is about 170 stalls for the residents and 153 for the office right now. And there'd be that opportunity to share, particularly after hours of the office and on the weekends when the resident, you know, the resident vehicle count would be higher at that point.
And we've executed that on other projects. And it doesn't work as well with retail, but it works really well with office. The idea that office is more of a, pre-COVID, more of an eight-to-five, and residents are often returning around five or six and leaving potentially for other offices in the morning. So we've had this combo be successful.
And a couple other notes for the plan are the residence is seven stories and 208 units, and the office is a four-story building at about 52,000 square feet. So one of the other 2040 design guidelines is stepping down from intersections. So we are coming up to a little bit higher at the intersection, stepping our way down towards the interstate. But I also just want to point out, we, in a kind of unusual sense, we really have very few neighbors at this point. With the country club, the historic buildings to the north, the interstate, it's really the office building to the south is our primary true neighbor in this instance. And then option B, Kerry Teague had pointed out the roadway difference here, the potential roadway impact on the site. So what, part of our ask today is to understand that impact and get some guidance from yourselves, and we got it from planning commission previously, to understand if we're able, or we should try to avoid building on that portion of the site. And Nick has also expressed the, you know, desire to staff that we want to work together with you to try to figure out a plan together and what's best for the city's needs. And the one interesting piece also to point out, which doesn't impact our site directly, is that there may be some potential development sites to the north of the site as well if the off-ramps were modified. Looking at option B, what we did is we kept it a little bit more simplistic in this version to have a discussion, that we just removed the office. And we slid the apartment residence over an additional 20 feet to the west. And this remains at 208 units overall. And then just needs a little bit smaller parking footprint as it's just going to accommodate just for the residents themselves. And you can see the very robust courtyard that we're planning and additional landscaping features. And we do anticipate that we'd request to MinDOT to upgrade their space as well as Perkins currently does right now. And this courtyard would really be a strong connection point over to the, towards the country club. And we have one other feature that we have is we have a glassy building link, where it's a little unusual to have an east-facing courtyard, but this glassy building link you'll see on the renderings is really going to allow light, like late western light to flood through into this space once it gets a little darker. And we, and I think that really will be a nice highlight. One other piece we've incorporated into this is, on the top level, we've stepped back the building on the main roadway sides just to soften the feel of the height overall. And you'll notice that as well in the renderings.
One of the things that came up before you go to the renderings, and you can see it really well on these floor plans, that someone asked, would you do anything differently if that MinDOT triangle right there was part of our project? For example, would you not angle the building the same way? And we think if we ended up owning that MinDOT land, I've reached out to MinDOT a couple of times and just haven't been able to connect and haven't, actually haven't had a call back, we just think we'd use, it'd be more programming. It seems like a nice spot to have the green space that's there right now. It just seems like we could program it more if we owned it. We don't. It wouldn't actually change the width of our building. So the question was really, are you designing this angle just because you don't own that triangle? And the short answer is, is no. But there could probably be some opportunity to do something special outside if we control that.
So moving on to the exterior design portion of the project here. What we really wanted to do was really look at the immediate context of step one. And then we'd take another step out into the broader Edina to get a little bit more context on what influenced our design. And some of the pieces are Grange Hall immediately to the north. One piece of interest is to look at the vertical windows with the grid-and-mullion patterns. City Hall was something I'd mentioned that BKB had designed in the past. And what the BKB team did at that point was really look at the context and understand the materials used within Edina and then kind of put it into a modern interpretation. And some of the pieces you see are the casota, the buff stone here, as well as the copper panel on the upper portions. And we've also, were caught by the, informed by the two-story entry canopy as well, as we're going to be an adjacent neighbor to it. As you see, we brought some, a two-story veranda onto that main corner that we have as well that speaks directly to this en masse-ing and in form. And a few other neighboring projects as well. Additionally, we were inspired by some of the projects that have been recently completed that have more historic detail and were just historically oriented in their design focus. And that's something that we took on that, we actually were going to show our first design to explain a little bit of the en masse-ing of the office. But through hearing from some residents, Nick challenged us to go back to the drawing board, and we really worked strong as a development team to come up with the scheme that we showed at the very beginning of the presentation overall. But there's quite a bit of richness within a few of these projects, within the restoration hardware and the brownstone walk-ups just south of 50th and France, an additional detail that you see. And then lastly, we looked to the homes in, around the neighborhood in Sunny Slope and adjacent to the golf course. And the thing that, the twofold that we kind of caught of information that we brought forward into the design, one was the materiality. And, you know, looking at the more traditional homes in Edina, you're really seeing that buff stone, you're seeing white accents, and you're seeing some metal panel accents in some of the areas as well. And that was something that we have brought in, into the materiality of the new design. And then we also looked at the homes that were immediately adjacent to the golf course as we are, when you have residents on the golf course, trying to understand how those homes are backing up near the golf course and what their style is like as well. Here is that previous design that I mentioned that took a little bit more of a contemporary form overall. And the other design you'll see can be, is our preferred design at this point for the residence building. But what we wanted to show is the relationship to the office here, and that we've been really working on the site for some time and thinking about it. And you can see the seven-story residence stepping down to the four-story office and en masse-ing and feel overall of that. And really, the unique feature of having that MinDOT land really pulls the site and building, or pulls the buildings quite far back from Eden Avenue at that point. And that was some of our intentionality of bringing the project up to the street edge to have some presence as we're there. And finally, here now, we're at the updated design. And this really took in those different layers of information that we talked about. And we really looked at some traditional building forms of a base of the veranda here, but that stone continues on the side at two stories. A middle, we've got the four stories of white brick here, and then the top of the gray cement board. And that's, and as I mentioned, on the street sides, it's pulled back to even lessen the impact overall of the height and feel of the building. And the veranda, the two stories to complement City Hall, also the copper accents that we have throughout to complement City Hall as well, whether that's the underside of the veranda or additional secondary accent areas and the light fixtures as well within that. A little bit more of you moving a little bit further down Wilson Road and seeing the opening to the courtyard here and seeing that, the glassy link that I mentioned before, that really breaks this building down into the feel en masse-ing of two buildings overall. And then an entry portal for the cars here to create a clear sense of entry and for safety for residents.
A couple of details that we added that we, one of the ones we really chucked from the neighborhood that we've not done in any of our projects is this detail of all the divided lights that you see in all the windows. That's definitely not a common multifamily detail, but we thought it was really something we could pull out of the neighborhood. It has a very residential feel to it, as well as the pergola feel. And then Chris mentioned it, but I just want to touch on it one more time, that it's just, it'd be so common to just link these two buildings with more density, more units. But instead, we've got this essentially glass wall facing west, whereas the sun sets to the west, it'll shine through into the courtyard. We're changing the material of it, so it has a glow to it. And then by doing that, it's really two buildings that are on the site versus one big U-shaped building.
Just a couple more images here. This is moving a little bit further down Eden Avenue to the west, and you can start to see that wedge of the green space come into the project here. And one other move we're making along Eden Avenue is that through step backs and material changes, we're breaking down the mass a little bit further so that you get the white brick and the stone at the corner here, and then the white brick and stone at the corner here. And the gap, as you move a little south here, is that link. And I'll have another view to show that a little more clearly. And then you're seeing the activation of walk-ups and units in the lobby at the corner as well. And then an additional piece really brought into, looking at the bird's eye here, is we're looking at incorporating sustainability into the project. And we don't have a full list at this point as a sketch plan, but a couple of items that we do intend to proceed with are a photovoltaic array that we have on the south wing of the building here. And then we have garden plots for the residents on the north wing of the building. So it will create a green roof, and it will create photovoltaic here. And we'll certainly continue into the details as we go forward for the rest of the project. And then this is the left sheet we have with just a few more views. Here's a little more clear view of the link. And zoom in on these are just the quality that we're looking at of the courtyard space and of that entry and the drop-off as well. So that concludes the presentation. I think that the couple of areas that we'd ask for input are, you know, between options A and B, the preferences, and then additionally, the feel of overall FAR and height on the site.
What was your FAR on option B, residential only on the Perkins site?
2.4.
2.4? Okay. Member Jackson, do you want to lead off with your comments?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love the idea of being able to implement the Grand View Transportation Plan. I worry about the land that's wasted by that interchange and the opportunity to transform that into usable space instead of just on-ramps and safer is really exciting to me. So I'm definitely a fan of option B over option A. And hopefully, we can, the acquisition of that land and everything, probably, I think there was something in the memo that I read where that's kind of up in the air. But I love the idea of being able to clean up that interchange. As far as the height goes, it does feel a little on the tall side. But I just don't have a sense of what that area, it's kind of an island. So, you know, it isn't, it doesn't bother me, and we don't have that land to the north at this point. I guess, you know, the drop-off is something that I was looking at, and I don't know how that affects the shape and height of the building as the land slopes down there. But, you know, I'm not troubled by the height. I'm not really excited about a super tall, I mean, seven stories feels super tall compared to what's there now, obviously. So it's a change. But I guess my question is, how do you, how do you use that drop-off and the change in elevation on the site? Is it significant? I was trying to look through the pictures this afternoon.
So the, as you move south on Wilson Road, the elevation drops off of seven or eight feet. So we strategically placed the parking entry at that south, the south point of the site. And then the drop-off is up closer to the intersection. And we may have to modify that, as we heard from, from planning commission and from staff, that it's a little too close to the intersection. But we were deliberately placing that up towards the higher portion of the site, and it would ramp up about two or three feet to the elevation of first floor for the drop-off from Wilson Road, but, which would make it approximately flush with Eden on that side of the project.
Okay. So those are my comments. I do prefer option B. I'm excited about that opportunity for the transportation change, so.
Member Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I concur. I had a chance to watch the planning commission meeting. I agree with a lot of the comments that were made during the planning commission meeting. They really focused on, I think, option B as well, where we try to facilitate that future change of that intersection. I would note, by the way, a couple of things about the transportation plan to keep in mind. One of them was that, you know, those circular and freeway-to-freeway interchange ramps that are currently north of Eden and south of Burnham are a part of what we talked about in that transportation. we talked about in that transportation plan as midterm changes, so five to 15 years. So so those certainly are possible to happen soon. That would that would be really, as opposed to reengineering a bunch of stuff, it would be putting in a left turn up on Vernon and it would be really funneling that northbound traffic onto Highway 100 straight from Vernon. The other thing to think about with that is that even though it's a kind of double diamond or narrow diamond or whatever they call it, the the notion between Vernon and Eden is that that be a frontage road of sorts. So so yes, it's a it's a ramp that comes off up to Eden, but then going north from there would be a frontage road. So so I I know that the planning commissioners expressed skepticism about the green space on the west side of the building being very worthwhile, but it could be that once a ramp gets built there, it's more usable and less highway feeling. So I think that's a terrific use. The other thing that they raised in the planning commission meeting that I thought was interesting was this notion of some type of coffee shop or some kind of meeting place in the first floor of the building, just because you're a little isolated. And I I get that you're going to be first here, so the hope is that over time that fills in and there's other options. But for now, it would be hard, and I don't know what you're kind of envisioning for that interior kind of common space on a first floor. But that might be an interesting thing. I did have a couple of people reach out to me about, you know, the loss of Perkins, and that's not it's not really something we can do anything about. But but I think there are folks who enjoy that as a meeting spot, and if there was some kind of low intensity kind of coffee shop meeting type place there as part of the use, that might make some sense. And I recognize that you're, you know, you don't have a lot of people nearby that are necessarily going to be attracted to it, although you do have a lot of employees across the street at City Hall. And and I don't I mean, I think the the current images, it looks like you've done a lot of attention to detail on how it looks. I like the innovation with the the two buildings with the light coming between them. But it's a little early for me to figure out whether that really fits or not and the entire kind of floor area ratio or amount. But it strikes me as being something that's within the realm of what can work. And I love the little attention to detail on the rooftop with the solar panels and the other stuff. But again, that's more detail down the road, and it'll be part of engaging the neighborhoods and and other folks in the community as you're working on this. But I think it's a great start, and it does raise the prospect that we might be able to start implementing some of this Grand View Transportation infrastructure. And I get that that's not your job, that's going to be MinDOT, but we should, to the extended city staff or you or both of us, we should be exploring with MinDOT what they think about this whole notion and how it might fit in, just so we can have a better idea as we're moving forward. So those would be my thoughts.
Thank you. If I could just interject one thing, Chris, could you able to show, can you just go to that one slide that showed shows the ramp and shows the potential sites where we kind of skipped over this part, and I'm realizing in both council members just talked on it. So not this slide, yeah, to the right here. So we just it's it's worth noting, our site, so on the far right side of this image, you can see our site that we're talking about. These next two sites, we've got the historic building to our north, and part of that, this has potential site 40,000, 512, and then the 65,000, the north half of the 40,000 site and all the 65, those are those two ramps. So.
Yeah.
And I showed the idea is if all those ramps away, there's potentially like 100,000 square feet of new developable sites. If if you left that on ramp that goes on to the northbound and just did the off ramp as you're going north, it's like a half, it's such a half of the so there you go.
Right. And it's I mean, plus then there's elevation drop as well, and there's the possibility of parking underneath it. I know in the Grand View Plan, we talked a little bit about the notion of maybe some kind of park and ride or something underneath that. So there's all kinds of possibilities for those two sites once once those ramps are eliminated.
Okay. Thank you, Member Staunton. Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for for bringing up that one slide. That was one of the comments I was going to make. There is, there's definitely a lot of traffic challenges in that space, right? You have people using the back row to get to Normandale, right? You've got people coming off of 100 and kind of going that or going that back way around Jerry's. So that gets kind of congested. And then people coming up Vernon to get on to 100 using that on ramp. So it gets a little congested in there. And I think this idea of of adjusting that ramp and then creating those two other potential spaces and then designing around that, I think, is is was very creative. In general, I liked the design. I I thought it was very attractive. This might be a stretch, but it's would be true for us if if I live there, my wife and I live there. I think it's walkable from there to 50th. And so when you think about when you think about it on the east side of 100, you really don't have that kind of an option, right? On the west side, you've got Avidor, you've got these other buildings where you can get out and kind of walk to Jerry's or to Starbucks or what have you. And I think it's interesting if we have a building like this that in the, you know, summer through the fall, I think it is walkable to go from there to to 50th. So I liked that potential experience there. I I am eager to hear some of the some additional feedback from the residents. I would say that the the height didn't bother me if I lived there, if I lived in in the neighborhood there. I don't think the height would bother me, but I think in principle it doesn't because of the proximity to 100. And then you've got that the of the existing office building that's kind of adjacent to your site, the older office building. So I think in my mind, I wouldn't have, I think I'd be okay with the height and kind of that mixed. I would like kind of that mixed usage, though. However, your question about A versus B, I did like B more and for a couple of reasons. One, like I did like the green space, and so the 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 it feels as though there might be multiple usages, usage on the site. If you're if you're taking the option B, it gives us a little bit more flexibility in in the long run. I do, the the only question I would have is with the option B, and I think we've kind of talked about this a little bit, my original question was, I was just curious how we might use that that space. We've kind of talked about that a little bit. That's more of a more of a design question, just trying to wrap my mind around how we might use that that additional green space there. But in general, I thought is very attractive design. We've heard a lot from residents on other projects that they want developers to be creative and bring projects to Edina that are attractive locations that people would want to visit. And then the last comment I'll make is we do have guidelines for a reason. And so I would behoove you to definitely ensure that you look at all of the design guidelines that we have, whether they're in this space or not, and understand in general the principles around what kind of resident experience we want to have. It seems like you've done that because I do see some of those elements in your design. But the more you can do that in your project, the better.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. And Member Anderson?
Thank you. I well, first, let me just mention that there's a ton to like about your design and architecture. And and really, your design is outstanding, even on on both projects A and B. Use of glass, I think, is especially good, and I think especially in Plan B, that's quite interesting. But you kind of have a tale of two cities here, with either A or B. And and I know you'd like some feedback, so I'd like to give you some on A. And I think that, you know, at a at a 40, the far requirement that you create there is that that's that's a little tough. The 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 traffic that that's going to generate in what I would view as a relatively constricted area, I think is going to be that's going to put a lot of stress in the area. And especially with an eye to the possibility of the south side ramp onto 100 there from Arcadia and Eden, if that winds up being closed, then we circulate all the traffic out to 50th in order to go south on 100. And that becomes, I think that becomes problematic. Now, we don't know if that's going to happen for sure, but I think that there's a general movement to that. Possibly that intersection could be managed better with lights, but that's not in the cards right now. The other thing that jumps out about Plan A for me is how much MinDOT enters into it. And if that precludes what you can do there to execute your plan in its entirety. So, you know, to me, anyway, it's A becomes more much more difficult. I think in in terms of the look, in terms of the traffic, the density with the far requirement, that becomes that becomes a little bit harder. As you know, in the near future, the city will entertain a proposal from Franchu on the Grand View site. And so which is, I think, given your proposal and what may come out of that, you get to me, that becomes two pieces of a puzzle there in the whole Grand View District that would be really interesting. And I I that doesn't leave too many pieces to fall right there. So I I think that the the future is interesting. It would be, in an ideal world, we could do a high view and begin to move farm-based design into the overall district to think in terms of what could go where. But as the mayor mentioned earlier, how do you do that with an uncertain future? I mean, that's a that's a that's a difficult thing to do. So long term planning is problematic, the absence of it becomes problematic as well. So so let's move on to Plan B, I think, the freestanding apartment building. That seems to me to be the most feasible, especially considering your timeline and the impact. It's certainly a lot more dramatic. Your design is so much more dramatic with the freestanding building. It just becomes really, if you were able to maintain all of your architectural elements, and I think you've done a really good job with that, if you're able to maintain all your architectural elements and and introduce, as Member Pierce mentions, design guidelines, they may, they don't apply necessarily. We can we can introduce those in other places than simply the Southdale District. We began to then be consistent in approaches as as we moved down the road. I thought that Commissioner Miranda made some good suggestions. He had a couple of thoughts there that that probably should be taken into consideration. And that was with your open space, your 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 open area, your your parkland, green area, what he suggested was that the noise factor from 100 becomes makes it almost unusable. Now, I don't know that that's entirely correct. It may be, though. I don't know if that diminishes use of it, who's going to use it, how would it be used? So I know you've got kind of a glass wall thought that may fit in there. There may be sound mitigation that you can bring into it. I don't know what those systems would be that could reduce some of that as a distraction from any of the folks that would be using that area. Okay, last, one of the things, anyway, I wanted to make sure that I mentioned was we, you know, we would, if 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 it turns out that you zero in on Plan B, then if it turns out the 208 units, even at a 2.4 FAR works out there, then you're going to have about 42, since you're going to keep your affordable housing on site, which is a really good idea. Got about 42 units, and you've mentioned that it's a long term hold for you. So that question doesn't have to be answered tonight, it's a thought. Mr. Walton, I know that you have a great deal of experience and you're managing properties currently, and I know that you've built a lot. So is it your intention to manage those units, or might you have another entity that manages the affordable housing units? You know, there's a lot of compliance issues there, certifications and so on. So if you're currently doing that, I wouldn't question your credibility in any way at all, so don't misunderstand me. If you're if you're currently doing that, then it makes even more sense. If not, it's just something to keep an eye on. If you decide to come back and and it's a it turns into a real project with with, say, 42 affordable housing units, that's something to consider. Oh, and then as as Member Staunton mentioned earlier, Commissioner Miranda's idea about amenities of some kind should this turn in to your freestanding apartments. There needs to be, to me, anyway, there needs to be some amenity, some something in that building. I think one of the points that were made by various planning commissioners were that it because of the island effect, which I think is actually kind of cool in terms of how that building situated and where it will be. It does, though, it what it means is is that it's it's going to be an automobile destination in and out, that it almost has to be that. And, you know, as a result, it's just it's a thought to how you manage it. I noticed that with Plan A, your parking doesn't quite allocate one space even per apartment unit. And I that's when you go to four and five star building, I don't need to tell you that the the parking demand would be significant, and especially in an area where you're not going to really have other access. So I just think about that. And then just a question in general, how tall is your building, your 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 Plan B building?
About 84, 84 feet, is that what seven is?
I'm sorry, your Plan B, the height of your 208 unit building. You've got seven stories, I equate that at about 84.
It's about, I counted four as well. I'm wondering what if Chris, if there's.
Yes, I'm looking at it. No, it would be around 80 plus or minus.
Okay, 80 plus or minus, yeah. Okay, good. Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments.
With regard to option A with the office, I think it's, you know, too much for the site. Far aside, I just think it's 10 pounds of sugar in a five pound bag. Love your design work, Mr. Kalkovich. The the idea that you looked at the residential neighborhoods nearby, you looked at City Hall, that BKV did a beautiful job on years ago, and looked at City Hall, as I recall, with the notion that it was a transitional piece of property from commercial areas into a residential neighborhood, and tried to pick up some of those same elements that you'd seen the residential neighborhoods and throughout the city with land and stone on the sides and copper and some real high levels of finish on City Hall. And it continues to be extending the test of time quite well. And I think the design work that you've done with this building, where you have housing only on option where you have housing only on option B with that wishbone, I'll call it a wishbone sort of effect on the building, I think it's really um, it it's really remarkable. I think it 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 kind of opens up that building to face towards the golf course. It means a lot of people uh, are going to be able to get a view out of a balcony of some green space to the east. Um, I'm not sure how you deal with sound deadening from Highway one hundred, but that's certainly something that would have been accomplished with an office building between you and the apartment building, but I I don't see that happening. Uh, so you're going to have to just work on your, your uh, insulating uh, ideas there. But overall, I think you're on a great track. Um, the the building setbacks uh, proposed for Option B, uh, I'm comfortable with those, uh, even though they don't meet the city standard. The building height that the Member Anderson just asked how tall the building was, then you said around eighty feet. It's four stories and forty-eight feet over there. Um, Member Jackson mentioned something about com- comfort, her comfort level on height. I have to think about that a little bit, too. I think six stories is something we've been doing quite a bit of. Uh, seven, I need to think that through. I know there's some uh, economic issues to uh, that come into play here. Um, but you might look at whether or not it's economically feasible at six stories, too. Um, and I think those are really the comments that I have. I think again, uh, at this stage, at sketch plan, to have that level of detail on architecture, to have that level of commitment to uh, the neighborhood and and coming up with a design, I think you've done a terrific job. And um, I congratulate both you and and Mr. Walton. Mr. Walton, of course, has to drive the bus on this thing, and so you're obviously listening to Mr. Walton and uh, in understanding the genesis of his past successes. So, uh, kudos to both of you for on the sketch, at the sketch plan review level, really uh, I I think doing a superb job. So, uh, we look forward to hearing more from you as we proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, we are on to the next matter, uh, which is the um, potential authorization of a prorated liquor license fee refund. And Manager Neil has this, and it deals with some of our businesses that have been adversely impacted by the pandemic. And we're trying to figure out ways constantly to help small business our residents, and this is one of our efforts to think about our business people that are most affected in the hospitality industry. Manager Neil.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, as I, as I laid out in the uh, council packet, uh, background information, uh, we have received uh, some, some requests uh, from our local restaurant uh, sector uh, for this action. Uh, when I have checked with what our uh, peer communities are doing in the Twin Cities, uh, we're, we have already seen on on most, I would say most, if not all of our peer cities have taken some kind of of similar approach. Uh, and that is that uh, folks who, restaurants who and bars who had uh, liquor licenses, who purchased liquor licenses last year, maybe purchased a liquor license at full price for a full year, but they weren't able to use it uh, because of government intervention, whether that's at the state level or or the local level. Um, it's hard to make it some kind of judgment about uh, how we could uh, how we could make good on on that, or at least uh, be fair with them. So, uh, we took a look at what their uh, what their compromised uh, business opportunity was in the last year and and looked at what it might be uh, for this year, and really just made a best estimate that uh, we we project that uh, if we wanted to give them a fair uh, return on the investment they make on a license, that we would discount it by fifty, we're proposing to discount it by fifty percent. So, what we're talking about in this case is uh, who, folks who bought licenses last year, if they buy another license for uh, the upcoming license period for twenty-one, uh, we would rebate them fifty percent of what they paid us last year against their uh, tw- uh, two thousand twenty-one uh, license fee. Uh, the approximate cost of this is hard to estimate, um, estimate, because it's going to be based on who comes in and seeks a license from us. If uh, if everyone who bought a license in the previous year comes forward and tries to buy a license this year, the cost to the city of this move would be about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars.
All right, questions for Manager Neil on this issue? Comments? On on, yeah, Member Staunton?
Any, any cares money left for this?
Uh, no, sir, there aren't, there's no longer any cares money.
It would strike me as filling the expense bucket on that front.
Yeah. It would, and it's a lot of money, there's no doubt about it, it's a lot of money. Um, but it's, it's, it's an amount that we could sustain uh, in our budget in twenty twenty-one.
And I think from a fairness perspective, you know, I mean, liquor licenses aren't, they're supposed to be a reflection of the burden that it puts on our city government to police them. And obviously, a lot of these folks have been closed and not able to do business, and this is a substantial expense. And it strikes me as a, as a fair way to try to ease the burden on these businesses that have been disproportionately affected by the pandemic. That's my thought.
Other comments?
So, yeah, just taking off that, I mean, really, one of the things that was specifically hit was people's ability to go out and buy drinks. You can't really do that in a takeout order. And so I like the way this is so closely tailored to the harm that this pandemic has done to our businesses. Um, so you may have said this, Scott, but, or Manager Neil, um, this is the same rate that other cities are doing, about a fifty percent um, discount?
I would, I would say they're, they're all over the board, but I would say most of them are in that band between forty and sixty percent.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Uh, no questions from me, I I I think this is an awesome idea.
Okay, good. Yeah, you, when you think about this, you you you're acting, we're, we're acting, potentially acting on behalf of all the residents of our community that help support our community, and if we think this is a good idea and something they would support, then I think we should be doing it, be thinking hard about it. And I think everybody's been concerned about folks in the hospitality industry, and this is a chance for our town to step up and us as representatives of the people in our town and say, we're going to try to help make a difference here, just like we've done with the Coronavirus Relief Fund and the CARES Act monies that have come in. And there may be more coming with um, uh, the new uh, administration of uh, President Biden and Vice President Harris, uh, they have a longstanding relationship with city and city government. And I think that the U.S. Conference of Mayors and the National League of Cities will be in there talking about the ongoing needs of cities, both with respect to expenses they've suffered and loss of revenue. So, there, there, there might be more ways to help in the future, but this is certainly a chance for us to say, yeah, uh, we're going to try to help as best we can as we go along here. Manager Neil.
In fact, Mayor, uh, the preliminary uh, stimulus bill that's being uh, that's being proposed by the Biden administration would uh, double uh, the amount of aid to state or to local governments uh, that we saw in the first phase of the CARES Act bill. So, uh, we didn't, as you know, we didn't get anything in the second phase, but the third phase looks like it's going to be substantial.
Good, thank you for that comment. Well, would someone um, entertain uh, making the motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, which would authorize a prorated liquor license fee refund for on-sale liquor license holders?
I will move, oh, go ahead.
Member Pierce moves, Member Jackson seconds?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do it that way. Member Pierce moves, Member Jackson seconds. Any further discussion with respect to the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen? Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, and um, I think it was, yeah, a great decision on behalf of the people in our community to say, we're going to extend a helping hand here. So, nicely done. Um, next, uh, Manager Neil, you have the matter regarding something we talked about during the work session with our legislative delegation, the potential adoption of the proposed twenty twenty-one state legislative priorities. Uh, and put it in statement form, and you have done that for us, it's comprehensive in nature. You want to address that issue as well?
Yes, I do, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I do want to uh, let you know that uh, our, our city management fellow, Reece Karim, has sort of coordinated this project for us, and she's done all the legwork. I'm just copying her homework here.
Uh, if, Ms. Karim, you did a terrific job. Kudos to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, so what we are asking uh, from the council is just a a review and an approval of the proposed um, state legislative priorities. It's important uh, from a city staff perspective that uh, that we are advancing uh, legislative priorities that you approve of. When council member, when, when uh, the public, when we're speaking in public, or if we're speaking to the media, or if we're speaking to legislators, uh, they often want to know, uh, if it's staff that's speaking, of course, uh, of how does your council feel about this? And if the council supports this and approves it, it adds a a level of legitimacy to the uh, priorities that is important for city counts, for city staff members as we carry, as we carry out your direction. So, that's what I'm, I'm asking from you tonight. Um, it's, it's the same format, if there's any changes that you propose to make to it, uh, we would make those changes and then uh, share those with legislators as well.
Councilmembers, we had a chance to discuss this in the work session. As I mentioned earlier, uh, is there anyone that wishes to modify this document? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-one draft state legislative priorities document. Member Staunton?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to raise an issue that I raised in the work session as well, um, about potentially modifying this document, if not now, in the future, to include um, advocacy for ranked choice voting. Um, I recognize that we'll need to have a discussion about whether we want to do that as a community. Some of our neighboring communities, Singles Park, City of Minnetonka, have both done it. But currently, we don't have that option because we are a statutory city and not a charter city. And the legislation that's currently being sponsored by um, Representative Alkins and co-sponsored in the Senate by Senator Franz, and um, just gives cities the option of doing it, it makes that available to cities. And so, I'd, I'd like the option to consider it, and um, and we can have the discussion, obviously, we'd want the city clerk to weigh in, we'd want the city manager to weigh in on just the logistics, and we'd want our residents to weigh in on whether it's a good idea or not. But, but as it stands right now, we don't even have the option of doing that. So, I would be in favor of amending our priorities to to add this as a, as a priority.
All right, other comments on that particular suggestion? Member Staunton, you can make it in the form of a motion, then we can talk about it.
So, I would move that we add um, advocacy and ranked choice of the current ranked choice voting legislation. And it looks like uh, Manager Neil has some uh, some thoughts on the topic.
Okay, Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmember Staunton. Uh, an easy way to do this would be uh, simply to sort of lift the language, maybe not in entire detail, but lift the general language out of the League of Minnesota City's uh, policy priorities where it is, and insert it into our plan, if that's what the council wants to do. You don't have to rewrite it, and it comes across, it accomplishes what I think Councilmember Staunton wants to accomplish.
Yeah, and it is um, one of the policies, as you know, the League of Minnesota Cities has an elaborate set of policies that they advocate for, and this is one that they're supporting, so it could be that.
How second the motion?
All right, Member Staunton's motion is that we adopt the twenty twenty-one draft state legislative priorities as shown, uh, and, but also adding um, the ranked choice voting language from the uh, League of Minnesota Cities um, position, uh, and incorporate that in this particular document. Is that consistent with what you're thinking, Member Staunton?
You stated it more eloquently than I did.
And Member Jackson, your.
Exactly what I intended.
Member Jackson?
I'm happy to second that.
All right, is there any further discussion?
I just want to um, say that the park fees, we didn't cover this with the lobbyists in the work session, but that's a really important thing, and if you can emphasize that um, in conversations with the legislature, I would recommend it. Um, so I I've lost the exact language, but you know what I'm talking about.
Park dedication fees.
Park dedication fees, that's, that's, I'm glad that's top of the list there, because that's a high priority.
All right, very good, any other comments? All right, let's vote on the motion as stated, the Clerk Allison, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Councilmember Staunton?
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye.
Motion is approved as stated. And um, and then we are on to correspondence and petitions. Anything come in, Clerk Allison, or Manager Neil, or Ms. Garsky, since we started the meeting?
Nope.
All right. Uh, aviation noise update, we're going to have to rely on Manager Neil, I think.
No update tonight.
All right, I I assume that no one has attended a uh, noise oversight committee meeting. All right, and Mayor, council comments, um, Member Pierce, any comments?
Yes, I um, you know, I just wanted to make one comment. I, and it's Senator Franz, and mentioned this in the working session. Um, I really did just reflect this week um, after the issue at the Capitol. Um, I had these conversations with my daughters about how fragile democracy actually is. And you don't, like, you don't really have a sense of that because of, of just the way our society has, has worked, right? So, lots of issues, nothing's perfect. Um, but it's definitely the pursuit uh, of a perfect union. Um, but just driving around after that, we just felt a little bit unsure of how we were going to make it through after the um, the insurrection at the uh, State Capitol. And so today actually was, was very um, encouraging, I think. Um, and uh, we watched the inauguration, um, and it was just very, it was a sense of kind of exhaling a little bit. Um, and it's, and you're exhaling a little bit just for the normalcy of being more predictable. Um, and so I've been, and I'm sure all of you have traveled abroad, I've been in countries where I've been issued um, political cards of the two political parties and have been instructed, if someone asks you for the red card, you show them the red card. If they ask you for the blue card, you show them the blue card, uh, just from a safety perspective. Um, and it kind of felt like that a little bit for me over the past couple of weeks. Uh, and so I'm just, I'm thankful for the opportunity. I'm thankful for a little bit more normalcy. Um, and I'm, it just underscored the decision to get more involved in politics. Uh, uh, for me personally, was the right thing to do, so. That's it.
Thank you for those comments. Really um, in, in important to be, yeah, thank you for, for doing it, very, very grateful for it. Uh, Member Jackson?
Hard to follow. Um, I've got a couple of comments, one is a practical one. The State um, Pollution Control Agency issued its greenhouse gas report um, last week. It shows numbers from twenty eighteen um, reflecting the polar vortex. And so the emissions, the energy use for industrial, commercial, and residential all went up pretty significantly in that time period. Um, but it does reflect the heating um, needs of the um, polar vortex. But I'd like to encourage everybody who's listening to talk to your friends and neighbors about being part of this um, climate action plan uh, ta- uh, working group. I'm excited about it, um, I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity for our kind, our city to put together a strategic way of addressing climate change. Um, on a broader note, you know, one Um, on a broader note, you know, one of the things that I found with this decision we had to look at tonight about, um, uh, the development on France Avenue is we have a lot of very strong personalities in the city and I'm very thankful for that. I heard a lot of different perspectives and it's really important to know that every, every voice is important. And sometimes we'll agree and sometimes we'll disagree. I saw, you know, a pretty clear conflict between, uh, goals that we all share. And I think it's important for everybody to remember that there are things we'll disagree about and things we'll agree about, but in the end, we all are members of this community and we're all valued. And, um, I want to be thankful for getting input on, on all sides of that and for everybody who participates in our city government because it does make a big difference and it makes us all stronger in the end. So, thank you.
Thank you. Member Jackson? Member Anderson?
Yes, um, I, I actually, in the airport noise update, I thought we would be getting a consistent Mary's Minute, I, but not, not tonight, but maybe in the future, we can get her to call in, like, right at that time. Um, I, I also, maybe this is kind of a look back, I don't know. Uh, I, I caught up on some reading here in the last few days and I noticed a, a, a very nice op-ed from, uh, uh, Mike Fisher, uh, in The Sun Current. You probably all read it. Um, I thought it was particularly gracious and particularly well-stated and, uh, it was, um, I just really thoroughly enjoyed reading it. I think it's a compliment to him. Um, last, uh, right behind me is a, is the original plat for the Village of Edina. I got to move upstairs here for a few weeks while we do some work down there and I, I, that's been here for a long time. And, um, so I'm, I'm willing to make appointments, but no more than two at a time, um, if you want to come and take a look at it. That's all I have tonight.
All right. Thank you, Member Anderson.
That's great.
Member Staunton?
Yeah, it's good stuff. I've been trying to, you know, make my screen bigger to see it all night. Um, the one thing I wanted to mention, uh, Mr. Mayor and City Manager Neil is, um, we had, um, to compliment our own Heidi Lee for the presentation she gave to the Edina Morningside Rotary Club this week on our race and equity work. She was terrific and it was a great conversation and she, um, it just, it just, you know, following up on Member Pierce's comments, it, um, it was, it was a nice constructive conversation about an issue that we obviously all need to talk more about and, and it was really cool. So it was, I give her a lot of, uh, kudos and wanted to pass that along to everybody.
Great. We'll pass it along to her.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Member Staunton. Uh, well said. Yeah, she, I think for those of us that have known her for a few years, now that she's been here, uh, it was really pleasant to see the folks in Rotary that really hadn't had any, uh, dealings with City Hall or Heidi, to see, uh, how she just knocked it out of the park and they, the, the comments in the chat room were extraordinary. I thought, uh, we were so pleased. And I think, uh, Carolyn Jackson was there, uh, on that morning call as well and, and would concur. Um, I did the mayor's minute today and, um, we, I just wanted to announce again that the, uh, state has set up nine vaccination sites. Anoka, Brooklyn Center, Fergus Falls, Marshall, Mountain Iron, North Mankato, Rochester, St. Claude, and Thiefer Falls. Those sites, uh, will initially serve adults 65 years of age or older, as well as pre-K through 12th grade educators, school staff, and childcare workers. So I understand we, uh, with all the call-ins, they managed to, uh, uh, you know, destroy basically the system that they had in place, uh, and I hope they have it running properly now because everybody's calling in and wants to get in the queue to get an appointment to get, uh, vaccinated. So, um, the closest sites for us will be Anoka or Brooklyn Center. And if you want to call for an appointment, you can call 612-426-7230 or toll free at 833-431-2053 to try to get an appointment to get your first, uh, round of vaccination. And then I thought, uh, Member Pierce started a real interesting conversation, something that I think a lot of us have been thinking about in terms of, uh, fresh beginnings, starting today with the swearing in of, uh, President Biden. Uh, I know for me, I always took for granted the peaceful transfer of power. I never thought much about it when it seemed like every president, uh, talked about it when they were leaving or coming in, that peaceful transfer of power. From the time of Washington walking out the door and handing the reins off to John Adams, uh, and then John Adams at their very acrimonious campaign, uh, against Thomas Jefferson, losing and walking out the door as well in a peaceful way and turning the presidency over to Thomas Jefferson. So on down the line, uh, we've had this peaceful transfer of power. And, um, there was a lot to think about, uh, in terms of democracy and, uh, what's been happening in our country. Uh, you did realize that it had some fragility to it, but it, at its core, I think it's, it's really resilient and I think we showed that by what happened, uh, in terms of, um, basically stepping up and saying, uh, through all of the, all of the congresspeople that were involved in this, uh, all of those flags that were on the mall, those $250,000, $250,000 flags, that we were, we were here to stay. So it spoke volumes, I think, to the, the new president, uh, in his speech about, um, that resilience, uh, and the democracy and that congressional building, uh, we're going to be here to stay and our democracy was here to stay. So thank you, Member Pierce, for bringing up those issues for us. I think we all have that common feeling, um, that we know this will be a success, but it's, um, it's had some bumps and bruises definitely along the way here. So, um, uh, Manager Neil, any comments you might have?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a few things to report on tonight. Um, one is, uh, is also vaccinations. I wanted to just let the council know that, uh, we work closely with Bloomington Public Health as part of our, the Tri-City Partnership on all matters of public health, but especially the pandemic, of course. Uh, they have been, uh, instrumental in coordinating the vaccination of our, of our, of our public sa, eligible public safety employees. So that's been going on and by the end of this week, uh, it should be completed for everybody that, uh, was, was able to or wanted to be, uh, vaccinated, should be vaccinated by now, I think in all three cities, but certainly Edina. As, as more information becomes available on, on additional, uh, community vaccinations, um, uh, outside of what, what the governor and, and the state have been talking about, we'll, uh, be sure and, and let the council know as early as we can. Um, I did want to give, uh, Dave Kendall is on the call tonight. I want to, I've asked him to prepare a, a quick, uh, update for council on the status of the RJR case. I've had a couple of questions about it this week and, uh, would you do that right now, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Manager Neil. Uh, I will try to make this relatively short and sweet for you. So, uh, and for the new council members, uh, I'll give a little background. So the city was sued over its tobacco control ordinance, uh, that went into federal district court where the city did prevail. The argument was that the ordinance is preempted by federal law, that federal law occupies this field and controls this area of regulation, so the city cannot regulate. Uh, that argument did not prevail at the federal district court. The city's ordinance was upheld. Uh, the tobacco companies then appealed to the federal Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals. The status there is that, uh, the briefing is complete. The tobacco companies submitted their principal appellate brief. We submitted our response. They submitted, uh, their reply to our response. And also, we received an amicus brief from approximately 25, uh, public interest and public health groups in support of the city's position. So that brief has also been filed. Um, the next step is oral arguments. We don't know exactly yet when that will happen. Uh, the court hears arguments the third week of every month and the, they've asked, uh, they've, they advised that we will have oral arguments. We just don't know exactly when that will be, uh, sometime hopefully in the next six to eight months and they'll let us know about a month before it's going to happen. So, um, that's where we're at and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kendall? With regard to the RJR lawsuit? All right. Any, any, um, thoughts on when those oral arguments might occur? Several months from now, I would imagine?
Yes, you know, I, I understand that, uh, oral arguments in the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals take a long time, uh, pre-COVID and COVID has only made things a little worse. So I, I think it could be anytime in the next s- six months to a year, hopefully, uh, closer on the six-month range.
All right. Very good.
But, you know, the good news, Mr. Mayor, is in the meantime, uh, our ordinance has been upheld and remains in effect, so. No detriment to the city in terms of the delay.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Appreciate that. Um, Manager Neil, anything further?
Yes, uh, the next part of my report, uh, will be delivered by Lisa Schaefer. She's, uh, going to talk a little bit more about the public hearing and correspondence procedures and changes that we're proposing to make. Lisa?
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to follow up and give you a brief update on changes that we've made to the online public hearing process. Uh, I included all of the information in the report. I'll just go over a couple of the highlights and then see if there are any questions. Um, we had talked briefly at the last work session and then I had the opportunity to talk to council members on an individual basis, just to get feedback about your thoughts related to how the online public hearing comment process is going. Um, we had received some feedback from residents. Overall, I think during the COVID procedures, we, we really changed online public hearings and implemented them pretty quickly and I think pretty successfully. But as I think in any situation, when there's more, uh, controversy or more controversial topics, um, we find that the process becomes even more important. And I think that some of the, uh, comments that we heard, uh, were related to inconsistency between how we brought in and, um, treated information related to online versus in-person. So the changes that we made are really around trying to mirror the live testimony and the online testimony to the greatest extent possible. Um, so the one, one change we're going to make is to require that name and address is published and provided regardless of the method of which it comes into. Um, so we'll still have the three options for public hearings. People can phone in live, um, they can c, do an online comment or they can leave a voicemail comment. But the change for the consistency will be that instead of using the Better Together automatic posting feature, we've, uh, added a, uh, specific public hearing comment form to the Better Together Edina public hearing site. So it's located in the same place as before, um, but the difference is individuals who want to comment online, first of all, they don't need to register for, uh, uh, Better Together Edina. And then second, they'll be asked to provide their name and address. And then in terms of where people go for, to view those comments, um, we heard from council members and some members of the public that it's, it was difficult to, um, because not all of the comments were in one place. So instead of posting those online comments on Better Together Edina, we'll be just including those in the council packet along with, um, so that everything is in the same place as the live testimony and that council members and members of the public don't need to look in two places to find all of the information. Um, so those are the changes really for the public hearing. Um, there's one other change that we made to council communication in general. And really, over the last few years, we've added several new methods for members of the community to communicate with council. Um, and one of the changes, um, that we're making, it was the elimination of the council correspondence form. So when we look at that particular form and any communication method, we're really looking at, um, is the communication method allowing us to reach more stakeholders? Um, is it allowing us to have a way to track and respond to data that we receive? And is it clear what the information is used for? And we found that the council correspondence form was, um, not a very highly used form and especially during the time since we moved to online public hearing comments, um, a, a good portion of those comments that came in through council correspondence really were better, uh, they, they were more appropriate for the public hearing. Um, so moving that, um, council correspondence form, eliminating that as a, a just not very well-utilized option and instead, um, directing individuals who might have used that form in the past to all of the other various methods. So there's still community comment. If an individual is, um, not, it wants to comment on something not related to a public hearing, but they want it to be viewed and accessible by the public, they can post that on Better Together Edina, um, on any of our social media sites, um, where we allow comments. Um, and then individuals always have the option of either the citywide email or the city council email and then contacting individual council members as well. Um, so I just wanted to see if there were any questions on the changes to the process or anything else that I could answer.
Questions for Lisa Schaefer?
I guess I just want to clarify that when we've got a public comment, we'll tell the public lots, lots of times that they can go to Better Together Edina, they don't need to register and they can do online comments. We want to make sure that people are clear on how to, to contact us and, and that, that's, um, and I think this will, by streamlining this, is, will help that a lot, but I want to say thank you and, and just ensure that that's the case.
Schaefer, you're on.
Sorry. That is the case and we'll continue to put that information out to anywhere that we think people are looking for public hearing information and all of the notices that are mailed, um, and anything related to the public hearing.
Is there anything that someone could do with respect to communicating with us using the council correspondence form that they can't do by sending us all an email?
Is there anything that they could do? I think-
Is there, is there, maybe that wasn't very, uh, well expressed. Is the council correspondence form redundant to an email to all of us?
It's redundant to the extent that, uh, the council correspondence form, we were already sending those by email to all council members because a packet is only published every two weeks. You're not getting timely information. Um, and typically, a, a lot of the time, you know, people were going to the council correspondence form really that they didn't necessarily know that, um, that went into the public packet. And so there were a lot of people using the form who expected a response. Um, I think if people were using that form and the goal is not necessarily to communicate to all five council members, but really that the goal is they want the information shared publicly, then we have other methods where that can be done, um, via either Better Together Edina or social media site or using our community comment features.
All right. Thanks for that clarification. So if somebody wants to contact the mayor or the individual city council members or all of us, uh, with, with respect to, uh, a piece of information that they want us to have or some concern they have, they can email all of us. Uh, it's just not going to be part of the public record. Is that what I hear you saying?
Yes, and that, that is the same as today. So I would say it, it's much more common that individuals were emailing the city council or using Better Together Edina or any of our other methods because those are the methods that, um, we are tracking and responding to. Um, so Better Together Edina is monitored by staff and they're going to get a quick response typically on Better Together Edina. City council, uh, the city council email that automatically goes to all council members and you get it right away versus being posted in the public packet.
Okay. Anybody have a concern about the elimination of the council correspondence form?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. Um, are you aware of any other cities that, that put this correspondence into the public packet?
No, there are not any other cities that we have ever found that have had- No, there are not any other cities that we have ever found that have had, had this kind of a process. Um, it, it's always been sort of an unusual process and as, uh, we've sort of tried to find out how it was originated, I think the, the most likely approach is that it was kind of a holdover from when everything was still paper and that is how council received their mail was at the same time they received the packets. Um, but we, we've asked and have tried to find that out as well throughout the years, and we have not come across another city that had, had a similar process to what we had before.
All right, thank you. I don't have any concerns, Mr. Mayor, I think this is, I think what staff is proposing makes a lot of sense.
That was a good question about, uh, comparing our processes to those of other cities. Thank you for doing that. Anybody else have any concerns? It seems like, uh, Assistant Manager Schaefer has done a really thorough job in analyzing everything and trying to make sure that people's voices are going to be heard, uh, as Member Jackson said earlier, it is important that everybody's voice be heard. Everybody's voice matters in a democracy, so we've got methods of communication in place, it seems like, that meet all of those criteria. And, uh, Assistant Manager Schaefer, anything? Um, well, any further comment? I mean, you, you were the, you were the thought leader on this, I think, and so you're comfortable with the, the methods you leave or the suggestions you're making to the council in terms of us being able to effectively communicate with our residents and vice versa?
Absolutely, I, I think going back to really the, the methods that we look at and the goals that we looked at are, one, our communication methods, getting more residents and stakeholders to respond. Two, are they easy to understand? Um, and are we effectively tracking and responding? And so we were really eliminating one that didn't meet that criteria, but over the last few years, we've added several new methods for communicating, I think all that are, um, we can always improve, we can always manage all of them more effectively, but overall, um, we are continuing to improve the way, uh, and the options that we have for people to communicate with us.
Good, thank you for those comments, I think you did an excellent job on the analysis here.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so folks, this doesn't require any kind of motion, it was just a report out, I think, and if anybody had a concern, uh, you wanted to hear it, so everybody's comfortable, my colleagues, everybody's comfortable? Okay, good. Anything else, Manager Neil?
One final thing, Your Honor, and that is that-
Keep it, keep it going, we're not at 10 o'clock yet.
Last, last thing, uh, we have heard, uh, over, over the course of the last year during our community comment, comments, uh, a- about the, the, the fire station projects, um, mostly about Fire Station 3, uh, for the northeast part of Edina. Uh, it's fair to say that, uh, that the study that's been, you know, that was performed for the city by Five Bugles Design has been mischaracterized, uh, pretty consistently, uh, during those discussions. So next week, or, or at our next meeting, I'll come prepared, uh, to address those comments and questions, and I'll share with you the conclusions and recommendations directly out of the, directly out of that study. Um, and I think we may even have updated data by that time as well, so I just wanted to let you know that, and so you can expect to get that at the February 2nd meeting.
I think that's an excellent idea.
And that's all I've got for tonight.
All right, did that prompt anything from anyone else on the council?
No, Mr. Mayor, I would just note that I'm gonna take, um, City Clerk Allison with me the next time I buy a lottery ticket because it is 9:55 and I would move for adjournment, and that is exactly the time she predicted we would be done.
I will second that motion.
She's good at her job.
All right, we've got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Jackson, that we adjourn the city council meeting for January 20, 2021. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye, we stand adjourned, good work, everybody.
Good night.
You, good night.
Good night.
And Member Pierce, great work.
Thank you.
You've had tough issues right off the bat.
It's good stuff, though, good stuff.
Yeah.